The silence button.
The silence button. Well, stop me if I stumble over something. Agendas, I have three agendas in front of me. One, I printed off at home, and two that were on my desk. So, okay. There we go. Those are both the same, I think. All right. Let's go. You ready? Recording?
Yes, recording.
Okay, welcome, everyone. It is a regular meeting of the Arlington City Council. It's the 18th. Time is 6:34 PM. And I will call the meeting to order. I'm Rich Nagel, Mayor of Arlington, and I will be presiding at the meeting. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, again, welcome, everyone. At this time, we'll have roll call of the council members. Councilmember Batcher?
Here.
Councilmember Hattledstuff?
Here.
Councilmember Cowell?
Here.
Councilmember Yashewski?
Here.
Councilmember Highland?
Here.
All council members are present. Also, at the table here, to my left, is city administrator Pat Melvin. To my right, city attorney Ross Arneson. With us this evening, police officer Sarah Jankowski. Welcome. Danny Whaler, welcome to you. And two members representing the cemetery board, Jennifer Nessie and Dennis Van Morleham. Also, our maintenance supervisor, Kirby Wecworth, and representing Arlington Enterprise, Kirk May. All right, moving on to item three. Approve the agenda. Any agenda additions or changes? Is there, are there any changes in the agenda?
Yes, there are.
Okay. I, I would have one. Well, okay. We're having them, all right. I see. You got it. Okay, we're, we would, at this time, propose to move Danny Whaler's, the Resolution 47-2018, up from its current position at 11D. And we're going to be moving that up to immediately after the consent agenda. And then, item two, under consent agenda, the following ambulance resignations will be added. Ashley Carlson, effective 6/21/18. Jim Peterson, effective 6/18/18. And Kevin Pezatorf, effective 7/25/18. What about that for a note? Okay. Okay. Also, I would like to scratch item 14. Under unfinished business, the six-month performance review for city administrator Patrick Melvin. That will be taken up at a closed session at the next council meeting. So, that one is scratched. All right. Any other changes? Hearing not motion is in order to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Highland, second by councilmember Batcher, to approve the consent agenda, or to approve the agenda as amended. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carried. Item four, the consent agenda. This evening is consistent as follows. Item A, approval of the May 21st, 2018 city council meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the June 4th, 2018 city council workshop meeting minutes. Item C, approval of the bills. Item D, approval of fireworks possession and display on July 7th, Sibley County Fairgrounds. Item E, accept resignation of Jenny Draghi, Arlington Ambulance EMT, effective June 19th. And then, we will be adding, well, I'll get to that later. Okay, the item E was the effect, the acceptance of Jenny Draghi's resignation. Item F, accept resignation from Michaela Holmes, Librarian 8, effective August 15th. Authorized recruitment to fill the vacancy. Item G, approve hiring of Shannon Nix, administrative assistant, at a rate of $14 per hour. And then, the items that were added. Item E, or H, item H, Ashley Carlson's resignation from the ambulance service. Item I, resignation of Jim Peterson, effective 6/18/18, from the ambulance service. And item J, accept the resignation of Kevin Pevistorf, effective 7/25/18, from the ambulance service.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Seconding.
I'd also like to add, I just want to thank the members of the Arlington Ambulance for their service.
Okay. Make that as part of the motion?
Yeah.
And it is seconded by councilmember Hattledstuff. Motion by councilmember Batcher, seconded by councilmember Hattledstuff, to approve the consent agenda as read. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No. I don't want to see the ambulance guys resign.
All right. We had four yes and one no on the motion for the consent agenda approval. The motion carries. All right. At this time, then, we will move up, as mentioned earlier, Resolution 47-2018, a resolution recommending approval of a mixed-use plant unit development for Block 19 of the original townsite. And that's the topic that Danny Whaler is present tonight to respond to, if anyone has any questions, or if Danny himself has any comments. Turn that over to city administrator Melvin.
As you'll note, in your packet, Cynthia Smith Strack and myself have been working with Dan Whaler. Dan has a pretty significant parcel there with a lot of different things going on. So, Dan worked very well with both of us, and we went through and kind of identified the different uses of the building that he currently has going on there, ranging from rentals to different small businesses. And so, in going through that, we were able to kind of identify his uses. And so, now, Dan is able to go ahead and get through getting it put together as a planned unit development. He's able to have all those different uses within that one area that he has. So, I know Dan was initially a little frustrated because he didn't know that the zoning had changed on that piece of property, and that changed several years ago. And so, now, what we're doing is kind of bringing it up to speed and putting it into a category, so that everything that he's got going on there is in line with what the current usage is. So, any questions or anything, Dan, that you have to say on?
Well, I'd just like to thank the PDA and everyone for working with me to kind of get everything situated again, so that, um, I can use the property for different uses. It's the, just apartments or just stories or just shops.
So, you're good with this?
Yeah.
So, basically, things are going to stay the same, Dan? I mean, your uses and everything, and I've got to remodel them, put in a grocery store or anything like that?
Not planning on it.
Okay.
But if I do, I have to talk to the city.
Or use Carolina or something.
Any other questions? Would someone wish to introduce the resolution?
I'll introduce Resolution 47-2018, resolution recommending approval of a mixed-use planned unit development for Block 19 of the original townsite. Whaler.
I'll second that.
Resolution 47-2018 was introduced by councilmember Yashewski, seconded by councilmember Hattledstuff. And that is a resolution approving the mixed-use planned unit development for Block 19 of the original townsite. We will vote by roll call vote. Councilmember Cowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Hattledstuff?
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski?
Yes.
Councilmember Batcher?
Yes.
All yet, all in favor, none opposed, the resolution is passed. Now, you can get on to your next meeting. Thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome. All right. Item number five, is there anyone wishing to address the council this evening that isn't on the agenda? All right. We'll then move on to item number six, announcements.
First item that we have is announcement about the Leading Sibley Together Program. This is a program that the city has been fortunate to have several staff participate in the past. It is basically a nine-day course where individuals get together in different areas of the county. And basically, the, a component of it is to network with other people, other local leaders, but then also to learn a lot about leadership. And as you can see from the handout that was provided, there are a variety of different topics, including dealing with conflict, visionary leadership, dynamics of change, et cetera. So, they are looking for participants for the 2018-2019 Leadership Program year. And I just want to make people aware of this. This is open to not just city people, but individuals from the public as well. So, if anybody is interested in learning more about it, they can certainly go to the Sibley County website at www.co.sibley.mn.us to get more information. It's an outstanding program. I came from McLeod County. They had something really similar there, and it does provide individuals with some outstanding networking as well as leadership training. So, strongly encourage individuals to consider it. We may even have one from the city, maybe somebody in the audience here, Kirby, who might be interested. So, we'll be bringing that forward to you at a future council meeting. But it's a good, good program. So. Next item, under announcements, the Arlington Summer Reading Program. It goes from July 11th through July, or June 11th through July 27th at the Arlington Library. They have a variety of different activities planned, all aimed at getting kids into the library and helping them to find what their interests are. So, looking where we are today, it looks like on June 20th, at 1 o'clock, they have funk junk drumming. So, making music with junk, plastic buckets, garbage cans, water jugs, and assorted metal objects. 1 o'clock on June 20th. So, looks like the next event after that is Wednesday, June 27th, and then again on Wednesday, July 11th and July 18th. So, visit the Arlington Library to see all the different fun activities that they have planned. The third item is the Arlington Farmers Market, which is on Mondays. Today was the first day, and it runs through September 24th from 4:00 to 6:30. It's right here at the Arlington Community Center parking lot. And individuals who would like to be vendors are welcome and invited to participate. I believe it's $50 to participate for the entire summer, or $5 per time. So, another wonderful thing that we've got going right here at the Arlington Community Center. Last but not least, then, under announcements, is that the Arlington Night Out is scheduled for Tuesday, August 7th, from 5:00 to 7:30 at Four Seasons Park. I know that the police department has been doing a number of different root beer float sales to try and raise some funds for some of those activities. And I'm sure we'll hear probably more about it later in Sarah's report. So, that is it for announcements.
Okay. Anyone have any questions on the announcements? We'll then move into communications.
Council members, we have two water, wastewater reports. We kind of got busy, and so, a few things got jungle, bungled up here a little bit, but we've got the March as well as the April report. Just looking at the March report, they are currently in the process of looking at some bids for replacement of a high-service pump, variable-speed drive. It's a piece of equipment that has had some repairs on it, and it's getting to the point where it would probably be more cost-effective to replace the unit as a whole. So, I know that we is working on getting some quotes for that. Also, if you look on there, they did have a sewer backup on Sixth and Chestnut. There was some question as to whether or not it was the city. However, they did do some investigation and found out that it was actually tree roots from a maple tree that had actually gotten into there. So, that is something that the property owner is going to be responsible for taking care of that. So, as you look at the charts that they provide as part of their report, you can kind of see where we were in 2017 and how that corresponds to 2018. If you look at the average daily water pumped, we're pretty much right on course with what happened in 2017. And if you look at the daily wastewater pumped, you can see that 2008 has been quite a bit lower than where we were in 2017. And I believe that's because of the later rains that we've had here in, in, in June. Typically, you know, you talk about April showers, spring, May flowers. It's been a little different this year. So, that will explain that. Are there any questions on the March report from People Services? If there are none, then, just taking a look at April. Again, there's a lot of maintenance preventative stuff that People Services does of interest. They're working with individuals at the new Semstone Building, putting some water meters in there, and doing a lot of maintenance. So, there again, you can see that in April, our wastewater pumped actually got back up to what it was in 2017. And our average daily water pumped exceeded what we did in 2017 by a small margin. So, any questions on the April People Services water wastewater report?
We always seem to get back more than we give out.
Very true.
Not necessarily a good thing.
No. So, all right, moving on to the third item. May building report. Are there any questions on the building that is happening within the city?
Did you skip over, see the Demographics Center apartment?
That's item D. We'll be coming to that next.
Oh.
Yep. If there's no questions?
I was going by the old room.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Oh, you're fine.
Continue on.
Item D is some correspondence that we received from the Minnesota State Demographics Center. Basically, they have done their analysis, and they're concluding that our 2017 population estimate is 2,208. Our April 1st, 2017 household estimate is at 907. So, if there are any concerns about that, they also provide an explanation as what we need to do to argue that those numbers are different than what they are projecting. So, I will sit down with Annie and see if there's a way that we can compare utility billing and different things to ensure that those numbers are in the ballpark of where they should be.
Okay, that's it, huh?
That's it, then, for communications.
All right, we'll move along to item eight, cemetery report. Mr. Dan Morleham? Ms. Nessie? Welcome this evening.
I think that's, the light's off. It's green.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, push, push it. I can push it, the button.
Oh, there it is.
Okay, this is our report. We're going to give you the 17 and then what we proposed for 18. The cemetery board is proud to present this year's report. The grounds look great. The roads are upgraded. The boundaries are starting to stabilize, and screening in the boundaries is looking great also. The columbarium has been an addition, a great addition to the entrance. Our group of volunteer board members learned along with me about cemeteries and the laws controlling them. The Arlington City Council eagerly joined us to make these improvements. The citizens of Arlington applaud the group working to upgrade our cemetery. For 2017, we planted, I should say Kirby and his crew planted arborvitae along the south border of the fairgrounds, and then over by the city utilities yard, I guess they call it down there. They planted some there. The columbarium is finished with three niches sold, one with nameplates and flowers on it, if anybody wants to see what a finished one looks like. And two lots were traded for niches. The roads are in great shape now. There is a little work, well, that'll come up here. I believe the brochure is now includes the niche costs. So, that is updated. And with that, that was 2017. And boy, there was a lot of work went in there, and hopefully, this year won't be quite as costly.
Sure. For 2018 projected, we would like to survey the old monuments that need attention. The concern there is we may not be able to contact family members and may need the help of attorney Arneson to determine what our rights or privileges are to do that as a committee. There are 10 items on this list. I'll try to go through them quickly. On the northeast side of the grounds, there's dropping away, there's erosion, and there's concern that that will get worse if there's not something done to mitigate. There is replaced, replacement needed on damaged sod east of the columbarium and protect it with the burial to stop cutting corner with cars. There's a dead tree in the middle of the cemetery that we're proposing being replaced by something similar that's been planted recently. Perhaps have a survey done of the east boundary to make sure we know where the line is. There's a need to extend spanning around the old east gate. This is something that I know has been brought up the last couple of years. And now that we've made progress in some of the other parts, maybe that can be addressed. We'd like to plant a red maple to match the west one that's east of the columbarium blockway.
So, it'd be a max pair.
That'd look nice.
Then, an upgrade to the monument maintenance policy, again, related to some of the old monuments that are deteriorating. Look at abandoned lots once again. And here, also determine what the city can do with some that may never be claimed or used. And the last item on the list that's relatively important to the budget is, is the lawnmower on the 2018 city budget still going to be purchased? If not, we would like to use some of those funds toward some of these other projects.
And that's it.
Okay. The monument maintenance policy, is that something the committee is going to start digging into and bringing recommendations to the city council?
Ross sent me a copy of the old one. We're going to review it. We haven't even had a chance to look at it.
Sure.
So, it's something that we want to look at, review, and then come back to the council.
Okay.
And the same with that abandoned lots thing. Yet, there's probably very little, if any, changes from the last time we looked, but maybe there has been some changes there.
Are there a lot of abandoned lots in the cemetery?
Great sites that are never, nobody's ever.
Nobody visits?
Yeah. Well, nobody's ever buried anybody.
No residents.
Yeah.
No residents.
Actually, they're sprinkled all over the old parts. And what we're trying to do is protect that south section until we've got that, them other two sections filled. And if there are any available, we should try to reclaim them and get them sold to somebody. So, and we've never done a census out there to see where they're at. And, and we, over by that northeast corner, we don't even know who's buried over there because they aren't necessarily marked. So, there's some of them areas that probably go down with history as there could be somebody there. So, that's kind of where all that's coming from.
Did you have any thoughts on how to keep that northeast area from eroding even more?
I think the only way you're going to do it, you may have to look over the edge and see if we're going to have to put some riprap back there because it's the cricket.
Right.
And then, at some point, if we get any extra black dirt or dirt, start dumping in that corner, and then we can let.
Fill it back up again?
Build it back up. And granted, when we're down there, could be some graves 10 feet down, but, you know. They're still there.
Are you considering, considering making a map of the cemetery?
There is a map.
Of the, with who's buried where?
Yeah. Of the known ones. But there's some there that, you know, somebody, old timers say, "Well, I can remember somebody was buried over there, and they probably didn't have money to mark it, and didn't necessarily even notify anybody." So, and, you know, in the old days, if you were destitute, they just buried you. You know, they put you in a hard cemetery where they didn't think they ever need to worry about it. There it says.
I think, I think there might be some merit in looking into, I know there's a software program that we could transfer everything. I don't know if you've seen, they record the burials now. It's on a big tagboard with a huge sheet of paper on with names written in. And there'll come a time when that's either full or it's going to be in such bad shape. And, and from visiting with office staff, it's quite time-consuming to convert one over to the other. But I, I think we maybe need to look into that and get things, you know, into, into digital form, so to speak. But I, I, I think we maybe need to look into that and get things, you know, into, into digital forms, so to speak.
For many years, Kirby Nickel was the brains behind that out there and he knew everything was right on his head. But really, regrettably, he didn't like it.
The pavement out there, somebody brought it up to me, I don't remember who it was. Maybe it's Kirby. On the most southerly east-west road. Have you driven that?
Yeah, it's kind of up and down, I don't know what happened.
It's kind of what I thought. Do we have any recourse to go back to that contract? It really, I don't know, I drove it out there. That was a pretty poor job. Maybe it's not as bad as what I.
The rest of the roads seem okay.
Yeah, the north side of it's fine, it's the south side.
I agree. It's, I thought, for a brand-new road, and a very good job.
How long, how old is it?
Last summer, last summer or fall.
I think we made final payment on it already though, did we not? Didn't we, maybe we didn't yet.
And it could be such a thing as that they would come back and do it right because it does, it doesn't reflect very well on your level.
Wasn't a real good job. No.
But you know, for once, you can drive all over that cemetery on roads that aren't chipped and broken.
Mm-hmm.
And it's screwed again.
Other than the tight corners.
Well, there's some tight corners, and especially over there by the columbarium. We gotta, we gotta, you know, put stakes in or something because they do cut across.
Was Jason Fembright, the city engineer, was involved in that bit?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
It was a major improvement though.
Major improvements. And then trees look so nice over the south side.
They all seem to be living, don't they?
Yeah.
They're just very nice.
Yeah, and same with the ones over by the screening, but there's right by the gate itself, there's on either side of the gate. What we wanna do is make sure we get it to the point someday where it's screened basically so nobody's cutting across or coming through.
I think when those shrubs on the south side are planted, if I remember right, they're about four feet off the actual line.
Yeah.
You know, taking into consideration they're gonna start spreading and.
Yeah.
Didn't want too much spreading onto people's property, but so, but that is.
And there was a couple of big trees that were there that kind of joined in with the trees, so that, they're just fine.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
But the problem was we worried about encroachment. There was, you know, you got a big field out back of your house and you got something out there and there was.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions, comments?
Kirby, can you maybe, question number ten, lawnmower in the two thousand eighteen city budget? You purchased that already, right?
It's been purchased this year.
So you.
And the cemetery had it budgeted to go some money on it, cemetery fund.
Yeah, I think it was a split between all three parks, maintenance and cemetery. Is that sound right, Kirby?
Yeah.
That was the only major one that was on the budget. The rest of this stuff here, a lot of it's planning and, you know, coming back. Some of it is just, it was regular maintenance. The tree, Kirby knows about that and you'll get to it.
We're waiting for dry ground.
Pretty soon you can cut it down and float it away.
Have you got that tree on hand, Kirby?
The what?
Have you got a red maple on hand?
No.
Because you can get it.
That's a different place. This, there is no tree where the red maple goes. And the other tree, we'll just have to decide if we even wanna put one when we tear it down.
Oh, the one that's dead?
Yeah. There's about three or four of them out there that are really old.
They are old.
Because one died and so we're probably gonna have to look at that and decide how we're gonna landscape that particular area.
Okay, any other comments, questions?
Good report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, keep up the good work.
Thanks.
Fun being on this committee.
Good, we appreciate your commitment.
It's been an education.
People are dying to work with you.
And at least I didn't have to help dig. Just call Kirby.
Yeah.
All right, move on to item nine, the main maintenance department update. Kirby, would you come forward, please?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I should've hollered out when you guys were talking about the cemetery road, but I was gonna wait for my turn to talk. So I reached out to Jason Fembright about the waviness in that road. His answer was, they built it to specifications. Nothing we can do. That's just how the road turned out. That was his answer to me. So I'm just relaying that back to you.
Maybe each of us will have to go out there and just, you know, drive it and just take a look and tell.
Yeah, it's.
If you drive it, you'll understand.
Okay, okay. I have driven it, but I haven't noticed it or not.
Notice that one versus all the other ones, there's a definite difference.
All right.
But as far as legal recourse, I don't know, it didn't sound too promising, but I'm not, no expert on it, but I was curious myself, so I asked about that.
Okay.
All right, well, we've been busy in this short spring so far. Last couple of weekends, you guys probably know, dealing with flooding in Fairview Park. This last weekend in the streets, that was pretty bad, but it eventually recedes, you know, after everything catches up. Not much you can do when you get that much rain in that amount of time. Mother nature just kind of has the upper hand sometimes on that. Wood chips, I have a big pile of wood chips down at the shop. We got frenzel done and we keep waiting for things to dry up to drive the equipment back in the other parks. But it keeps raining and then if there is a day or two where it is finally dry enough, we seem busy with other things, so we're trying to get that finished up. This town has been fully swept once and now Mike is kind of cross-training with the sweeper right now. So he's trying to sweep town again. After these storms, streets get especially messy with a lot of little branches and leaves and dirt and stuff like that. So working on that too, bit by bit. Street lights have been replaced with new ones, so that's good. We got extra ones now too, so that feels good to have.
Where are there some located who would pick them up?
Oh.
All the, are all the burnt out ones replaced?
You would know if you see them.
They're that bright.
They're, they're pretty bright. Yeah, yeah, they, there's a stark contrast.
I think if you just drive through the new road construction or where we did the road last year, I mean, it's really bright past miles, but it's really bright. And then if you go a block farther, it's pretty dark comparatively.
And in the interim, between getting those lights, which took, I think, two months from the time I ordered them for the time they finally showed up, we had more lights go out. Found out those were electrical issues, electrical issues that McCloud has to take care of. They've been so busy taking care of some storm damage in other communities that we're on their list, but so they should be getting here hopefully soon to service those. And it's maybe just a handful around town.
Do you know the street lights at the intersection of Brooks and Eighth Avenue?
Yep, that's the one stretch there that.
Has that been new ones?
They don't know, they've, I think, looked at that twice now and they, they keep coming up with a reason that they have to leave.
Okay.
They get called to some other emergency, it seems like, last, I think it's been twice now. And they cannot find where the lead comes from, those lights.
Because I know, somebody talked me up on it, he said, I gotta get my street light fixed.
Yeah.
He said, oh, you've got one out? And he said, no, three of them.
Yeah, it is three, okay. I thought it was four, but that fourth one must be the fairgrounds.
But that's, there's a number of them anyhow, so it must be sort of a dark area.
Yep, it's dark and they, they're struggling finding how to fix it, but we're waiting on that, yeah.
Kirby, how many, how many replacement parts do you have on hand right now, do you know?
Counting it, I think it's twenty.
Twenty?
Twenty, yeah, yep, street light adds.
Do you have, that was, was that the first order or the first and the second?
We got both orders.
They're both in?
Yep.
So the second one came fast or faster than the first?
Yeah, yeah. The bigger the order, the faster they come. It's, yeah, there's some big cities that are doing their retrofitting and so we order eight, little town of Arlington, compared to Los Angeles.
We're on the back burner.
We're, it's gonna take a while. Mike recently passed his class B written test and then you gotta wait a month to take the driving test, so on first Tuesday of July, he's gonna go down to Mankato and take that.
And that will.
And then he's got his class.
Qualify to cover, to drive what?
Uh, the bucket, our bucket truck.
Okay.
And what was the other one? Well, both of our bucket trucks. I think that's it, for class B for our department. As far as street work goes, I've been getting some bids for some street work with some catch basin repair and a handful of water valves that have been banged up from snow plowing that need to be dug up and replaced. The castings are busted and people keep calling in about cars driving over them and they're flipping up onto the road. We try to cold patch those in so they stay. Cold patching, we're still keeping at that too, little by little. It's hard to keep on one job without getting called to other things and other tasks that need to be done too in the moment, so. But I think considering we're in the same boat as most contractors and other maintenance outfits, it's been a tough spring, but I think we're holding it, holding our own. Last week, well, I should note too, I was out for almost a week getting a wisdom tooth out and I got a dry socket, so that set us back. I couldn't do much physical work for about a week in early June, so that knocked us back a little bit, but I'm back now, so. That's all I got.
Any questions, comments? The lights you're putting in now, are they the same strength as the lights that went in with the twenty seventeen street project?
They're actually a.
A little small, because I know they said.
A size smaller.
They, somebody commented that those are probably a little oversized.
It's pretty big.
Yeah.
I think they're meant for major roadways and I could even switch those around once we get moving on.
Oh, and put them more than maybe.
Put them on Highway five or major intersections and put a smaller one back in there. I could do that now, I guess, I got extra ones, so. Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I haven't heard anybody complain yet, but man, I drive through there.
Adam, does it keep your kids awake at night with the lights on again?
I got the trees, but yeah, it's, it's very bright.
Oh, it's bright, yeah. Sleep with your shades on.
I think you said that when we were talking about those new lights, the other ones were so dim and these are better to begin with when they put them up, they're gonna be seen very, very bright.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah.
And they're a smaller head than those big Cobras we have, but they put out more light, yeah.
And what do you do with the old ones, are you able to recycle or?
You can recycle, well, some of that can go in trash and then you do have to recycle some of it as well.
Okay, as far as the housing is concerned, that's a movement I would imagine?
The, yep, and I think it's the ballast that you have to, or is it the bulb? I have to double check on that again.
Okay.
Something inside of there has to be recycled.
Yeah.
You gotta pay for a company to come and recycle it.
Kirby, could you tell us, I'm sure none of the council members are inquiring, but the staff on the air conditioning for here?
Oh, yeah, so we accepted, that's right, I should've remembered that. We accepted the bid from, why not, correct? Did the council accept that?
Yeah.
It's a little later.
Okay.
Later.
So once that's accepted, Tim made it sound like it was last week, he said in a couple of weeks. But maybe next week or the week after, he should be able to start installation. Depending on what has happened in his schedule, I don't wanna pin him down on it, but he made it sound like in a couple of weeks, they'll have everything and be able to get going.
That's a small unit that really just takes care of this room.
Right, it's a unit, it's located kind of behind the wall outside here with those other big units.
Yep.
And they have to run, I think, fifty or sixty feet of line up through the ceiling and it's just for this room, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks for doing that, Kirby.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
I know Mayor said last time Compost site was looking good.
Yeah, we're trying.
I've had some compliments from residents saying that.
All good.
Looked awful nice out there.
Well, good, because we tried to burn it and then it kept smoking and smoking, it was like peat ground. Kept trying to bury it with dirt and then the next day it'd still be smoking, but I think we finally got that put out now. Took like three, three tries and we finally got it, and this probably last rain helped. But we just gotta find a place to put all the dirt and the ashes. Anyways, yeah, that's good to hear.
Looks a lot better out there, really.
Good.
Compared to what we had a year and a half ago.
Yeah, it's, it's probably our most used, I mean, it gets used so much.
How's the garb, minimal garbage out there?
It seems a lot better since actually we put that sign up, which I'm kind of amazed by that, but.
Yeah, people are actually complying.
Must be working. I mean, we still get some, but nothing to the amount that we were dealing with a few years ago.
Good.
Okay, thanks Kirby.
All right.
Appreciate it. Officer Jankowsky, will you come forward, please? Welcome. So you're filling in for the chief this evening?
I am. Chief Patterson is currently in Alexandria doing qualifications and trials with cash and we're looking forward to get cash on the road here soon, so, yeah, we're filling in for him today. There were a number of things that the chief wanted me to talk about and starting with the monthly report. We've been doing the routine calls for service and really been stressing on business checks all around town, apartment building checks and correcting city ordinance violations. We've given out many warnings for high grass and weeds, outdoor storage and parking and different animal violations and many to repeat violators. We now have a Minnesota statute in place in our ticket writer to start giving citations out and that will be six zero nine point seven four. It's labeled as a public nuisance, so for those people that are continuing to violate the city ordinance, we will start handing out citations to those individuals. Going off of that, it's come to our attention that there may be four or five residences within the city limits that have chickens. According to the code, chickens are only allowed in persons of the city zone as agricultural zones, but the chief wanted me to bring up the idea to possibly change that ordinance in the near future. We've had no complaints of chickens, they've just come up from a call for service or just stopping by, community policing, they're in some, like, I think one individual has them in their garage, in the backyard, in a fenced area. And with doing research, there's other departments in the area that don't have a code implemented for chickens. So like I said, the chief would like the council to consider and allow maybe a certain number per residence. So he just wanted me to bring that up. We've gotten a couple of complaints about the long grass and weeds along the railroad tracks. So the chief has been in contact with Twin Cities and Western Railway to come and mow parts of Main Street and he's also been in contact with different developers for lots that don't have houses on them yet that those lots need to be mowed as well. Are there any questions about any of the city ordinance that I just said?
Well, I know the idea about having an ordinance that deals with chickens is not unusual. I mean, there's a lot of cities that do have just a basic allowance on that and within, you know, within reason, having a certain number or less and having them contained, so.
No roosters.
No roosters.
Mr. Mayor, I'm kind of a quasi-expert on chickens. My son lives in Shorewood and he's had chickens for about three or four years now. And when he first got the little chicks for Easter for his girls, they were just little and then they grow up. So he worked with Shorewood, I don't think they had an ordinance at the time, so he was allowed to have six chickens, had to notify the neighbors within five hundred feet if there's any objections and of course he wouldn't. Obviously had to take care of the manure situation, so it didn't spill over, but I think, I think it's something we should look into. I mean, ninety-nine cents a dozen for eggs, that's outrageous, you should really grow your own chickens and have your own.
Do you want to hang a house in the backyard or what?
In what?
Want to hang a house in your backyard?
You have a personal interest in.
Sheep eggs?
No, I don't.
Oh, okay, I just wondered.
I'm just.
It's a pretty harmless type of activity and, you know, they don't bark in mid, at midnight.
No, the only issue he had, he forgot to close the gate one night and Mr. Fox had lunch.
The fox is gonna eat too.
Yeah, the chicken coop, so, you know, you gotta start over, but he had quite a story on how, you know, where the chicken coop had to be and housing and. he had quite a story on how, you know, where the chicken coop had to be and housing and instant area and stuff like that, so. Yeah, there are other cities closer to the metro area that have chickens.
So, the council understands, as Officer Jankowski correctly stated, we do have an ordinance that says you can't have chickens. That was debated in the council a number of years ago, my recollection is it was a fairly close vote, but they voted not to allow it. But of course, any new council can change the policy.
So, it would be just going in and changing that part of that ordinance that's already there?
And I think that we're taking a look at July second, having a workshop prior to that council meeting, where we'll talk about the code and some changes and some different things, so that would be an appropriate time to bring that discussion up for council consideration.
Okay.
Another thing that he wanted me to bring up was that he, Chief Patterson is going to be meeting with the Sibley County Sheriff's Office and other police chiefs in the area to discuss a truancy plan. Um, the principal really wanted a, a plan in place before school starts, so they are going to possibly be meeting on the twenty-second or twenty-fifth of this month. Um, another topic I don't know much about, but he wanted me to bring up, um, pro- possibly putting a camera system in place out at Four Seasons Park. He has been researching different camera systems, and here's two that he's come up with, there are many to choose from, um, I don't know if I have pencils around or, yeah. So, I think the, the thing that he wanted me to talk about was for the council to see what a reasonable price would be for the system. Um, the white camera system there is a little less expensive, um, I think it was like five hundred and ninety dollars or something, and then-
Yep, you're right on.
Okay, and then the, the black system there is just under a thousand, um. The benefits of getting the more expensive one is it's more likely going to be vandal proof, vandal vandalism proof, nobody would be able to tamper with the cameras. Um, it would be, um, less accessible to steal the cameras, and there's a chance for a wireless connection. And, um, I guess the only drawback of the more expensive is that it's a thousand dollars. Um, so, like I said, if you have any, if you have any more questions about that, um, the chief would be willing to answer, but I guess just to get an idea of, some type of system to be put in place out at Four Seasons Park.
Well, it looks like there's twice as many cameras too, the more expensive ones, so.
Yes, yep.
You're getting eight or eight cameras instead of four.
Yes.
You usually get what you pay for in this camera, it's like trail cameras, quality ones cost four.
Yes.
Pixel wise on the pictures, everything.
Okay, and then on August eighth, the Arlington Police Department is going to be hosting a critical incident response at the Sibley East High School. Um, we are going to be inviting other police departments, our fire department, ambulance, and teachers to the event to give everybody a tour of the school so they understand the layout, and I believe the chief is going to implement some type of critical incident, so each department and, um, all of the personnel will know what they're supposed to do in case of emergency. Um, along with the school, everything has passed to get a new antenna system, it's called a bi-directional antenna, and it should be installed by the start of the school year, and hopefully that will help significantly with the radio issues within the school. Uh, and then I wanted to let you all know that, I, I guess I don't know where we're at with the ri- getting a new radio system for the city. I think we were talking about im- or putting a system out on the water tower or something. Um, but recently I've had two different, so I was on a traffic stop, and then I had to help with a minor fender bender accident. One was on Highway five and the other one was behind the bank, and I could not get any radio service at all. I, I got a constant bonking noise, so if it would have turned to something bad, I wouldn't have had any way to let dispatch know that I needed help. Good thing it didn't, but, um, I would hate for it to happen again or happen to somebody else, and, you know, yeah.
That's, that's a story to, uh, bring up when our legislators meet with us here, because they're the ones that need to impress on to help with funding of the, of the larger system, so just incidents like that, I think are very,
Yeah.
You know, very sobering.
I, I know, and a lot of the buildings in town, I guess it's a, maybe a little more understandable that there's not great service, but this was, I was outside, um, right on the highway and in between, I guess I was in between some buildings, but I was in an alleyway, I, I feel like I should have been-
Should've had some coverage.
Yes.
That's not good.
Yeah, so the, the squad radio worked, but my, this one here, it wasn't working for me at all, so.
Nothing, okay, wow.
So, and then the last thing I'm gonna talk about just briefly is the Arlington Night Out event, um, we are very excited for the event. Um, as city mi- city administrator Pat Melvin said, we have been doing a lot of, uh, quite a few fundraisers, we've been selling ripper floats, um, we did one at a track meet. Um, we sold ripper floats during lunch at the school when school was still in session, and then recently we did one at a T-ball tournament down at Four Seasons Park. So, uh, we're bringing in some good funds and, um, hopefully we can have some fun events at the event. Uh, we're still figuring out some minor details, but like I said, we're really excited for it.
Okay, great.
If you have any more of those and you need help with staffing, then just add, ask John to tell him to call me, I'd be more than happy to come and help.
Okay, the fire department and ambulance have been really helping as well, thank you.
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to help if you need some help.
Okay.
On behalf of the Over Sixty Band, do you have a slot for them to perform at?
I heard Heidi Jo Fisher talk about possibly having that band perform, um, I think it was a hit last year, I, I wasn't there, but, um, I don't know if they're gonna, she's probably gonna reach out to-
My understanding is that we're gonna do it again, it's just what time so that people can get here or have a little chance to warm up and so on.
Okay.
So, are you saying I should see Heidi?
Yes, or else I can have Heidi contact you as well?
Well, if I try to contact her, you tell her to contact me, we should.
Hopefully.
We should make it work.
Okay, any questions for the officer?
Very good report.
Thank you.
I've been giving many compliments.
That's good to hear.
On your job and performance.
Thank you.
Good to hear.
Thanks, Sarah.
All right, move on to, uh, item eleven, res- ordinances and resolutions, of which we have taken care of, item D, resolution D, that one's done, so move, move right into item A, resolution forty-four dash twenty eighteen, resolution approving terms of a loan to Ruthers Roost Childcare from the Arlington EDA Childcare Loan Program.
Council members, as you are well aware, Sibley County and more specifically Arlington has a real shortage in terms of, uh, daycare facilities. Because of that, the Economic Development Committee has come up with a proposal to try and stimulate, uh, some expansion of daycares, and what they've done is they've put together this childcare loan program, which enables them to assist with some of the startup costs, up to fifty percent of the startup costs of starting up, uh, daycare, and so they're very delighted to have, uh, Ruthers Roost Childcare starting up, so, uh, they basically were able to verify by receipts and different things, uh, the amount of money that was spent to start up the daycare, and is now requesting your permission and has approved through the EDA a resolution to go ahead and to, uh, pay in the amount of one thousand one hundred and twenty-nine dollars, uh, money towards the cost of starting up this daycare. As you can see, there's a lot of conditions, uh, set in there, including that the property must be in operation for at least one year following the dispersment of the loan, and, uh, receipts have been provided, so, looking for your approval.
Is the daycare operating already, or is it waiting for the funds to?
My understanding is that it's waiting for the funds.
Am I?
You know, I,
Go ahead.
I guess I don't know the answer to that question, um.
So, it looks like to me that she's spent eleven twenty-nine so far, however, is our cap at a thousand dollars?
That's my understanding.
So, I, I would, correct?
Yeah.
So, I'd like to introduce resolution, um, twenty eighteen dash five, um, approving the term-
Oh, no.
Is that, uh, forty-four dash twenty eighteen?
Forty-four.
There you go, there you go.
Sorry, um, I'm looking at the EDA.
You're looking at the EDA one.
Let me see here. Uh, resolution forty-four dash twenty eighteen, approving the terms of loan to Ruthers Roost Childcare from the Arlington EDA Childcare Loan Program for, um, forgivable loan, um, fifty percent of her total cost, I think that's what the law states.
So?
So what, that doesn't make sense.
Well, it says-
What is her total cost?
Forgivable loan in the amount of a thousand dollars or fifty percent of the actual project cost, whichever is less.
Hmm.
So, um, if we take eleven twenty-nine and divide it by two, does that make sense?
Five sixty.
There you go.
Yeah.
If she spends more, then that would go up.
Then, yeah, that's why I would say fifty percent of the actual project cost, so if there's more, uh, receipts that come in, I would, part of my motion is to authorize that as well.
And they have to be off that list of qualified items.
Correct.
There's a list of items that they can buy.
Right.
And it has to be within that list.
To the max of a thousand dollars if she, if she would reach that by fifty percent.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
To clarify.
Right.
So, that's my motion.
So she can spend up to two thousand and get a hundred, and get a thousand dollars reimbursed?
Correct.
Yep.
Maximum, yeah. Okay, um, did someone second that?
Second.
Resolution forty-four dash twenty eighteen was introduced by Councilmember Batchra, second by Councilmember Haddelstead, and that is a resolution approving approving the terms of a loan to Ruthers Roost Childcare from the Arlington EDA Childcare Loan Program, the terms of which are spelled out in the resolution. Uh, is there any more discussion?
I just have a couple, I just have a couple of questions on the daycare, do they need any licensing from the city?
Um, county, state, so it's all done through the county, um, Tara is the one at the county that, uh, does the licensing and helps with all the paperwork. But it's state licensed, it's not city.
Do the neighbors have to be notified of, uh, daycare going in the neighborhood, like if you were gonna start another business? Like chickens, for an example.
Probably would be a question for the county representative, because I'm sure they go through their, whatever the requirements are as far as notifying neighbors.
I, I don't, I don't, uh, I don't, I don't believe there's anything that you need to notify, however, it's in your best interest to notify everybody at anybody, right? To kinda get the word out, bring them in.
Cause we have, we have two daycare facilities in our neighborhood, one on each side of our house with six to ten kids in each one, and, um, I think I'd rather have chickens, but anyhow, um.
Only during business hours.
Well, you know, not only that, you know, there, there's a lot of noise, but also there's little guys running around on the street and so forth and so on, and it's, you know, if you aren't aware of that, you know, um, I just think the neighbor should be notified.
Any other comments?
I, I just think this program's great, that we've got two people to, to sign up, I mean, we've had such a shortage. So, I'm glad, I'm glad it's working.
Yeah, it, it seems to be working, we've got, like I said, like you said, two new ones, Arlington is the, if there's a shortage in the county, we are it. So, boy, anything we can get is gonna be a huge improvement.
Yep.
Anything else? Hearing announcement will vote by roll call, Councilmember Haddelstead.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowal.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchra.
Yes.
All in favor, none opposed, resolution is adopted. Resolution forty-five dash twenty eighteen, revisiting the commercial, revising, I'm sorry, revising the commercial buildings and lots policy.
Council members, you previously approved this, uh, with the wording that for a job that would create at least fifteen full-time equivalent positions, the commercial building lots would be sold for a dollar, and then it also had for, um, businesses that would create at least five full-time equivalent positions, the lots would be sold for ten thousand dollars. Uh, what is being recommended here is that you provide a in-between so that if someone can come to town and create ten full-time equivalent positions, uh, that you would be willing to sell them a lot for five thousand dollars, so. The EDA is recommending that you approve this, and I do believe it applies to a business that is currently looking at Arlington.
So, we're simply just adding a step in between one and, it would, instead of one and two, it's one and three now?
Right.
Yeah, basically between five employees and fifteen, you're just adding one of the ten.
Ten, get a little, get a little more money.
Yep.
Over the dollar.
Correct.
Well, I will, uh, recommend that we approve resolution forty-five twenty eighteen revising the commercial building and lots policy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Resolution forty-five dash twenty eighteen has been introduced by Councilmember Yashewski, second by Councilmember Haddelstead, and that is, uh, revising the commercial buildings and lot policy, open for discussion.
This also talks about buildings, right, so it's not just lots, it's buildings and lots, the way I read it.
Yes, I'm sure.
Buildings and lots.
Yes.
Yep.
Correct.
Okay, any other comments?
I still have a tough time selling a piece of commercial property for a dollar.
Okay. So, that should mean that you're gonna vote yes on this, right?
Bring it on.
All right, hearing no other comments or questions, we will proceed to vote by roll call, council, well, let's, let's do Councilmember Highland.
No.
Councilmember Cowal.
Yes.
Councilmember Haddelstead.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchra.
Yes.
Four in favor, one opposed, the resolution is adopted. Okay. Resolution forty-six dash twenty eighteen, um, that would be the approving the business assistance application.
Council members, this form is for a business, uh, to request, um, tax increment financing or tax abatement. So, it's the form that they would fill out, complete, and submit to you for your consideration, so. Just looking for your approval to use the form for any businesses in the future that would like to be considered for those two benefits, tax abatement or TIF.
And that has to be done through the city, correct?
Correct.
They can't do that on their own, they have to come to the city, and the city has to.
Right.
Start, at least start the application.
Yes, yep.
And we've never had a form before, or we just updating our form?
That's my understanding from EDA Director Newsom.
Oh, really?
The process referred to a form, but yet there was not a form available. So, this is just putting one in place.
All right, well, I will introduce resolution forty-six twenty-eighteen approving the business assistance application.
I'll second it.
Resolution forty-six dash twenty-eighteen was introduced by Councilmember Batchra, second by Councilmember Haddelstead, and that is approving of the business assistance application. Open for discussion.
Is there any fee for filing the application?
There is not, no.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, proceed to vote by roll call. Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchra.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Haddelstead.
Yes.
All in favor, none opposed, the resolution is adopted. Moving on to unfinished business, item twelve, approve or deny partial payment of eighty-seven hundred and twenty dollars to Juul for water meter installation at fairgrounds. I believe that was the contracted or quoted amount that the council agreed and accepted back a number of months ago, quite a number of months ago.
Correct, that was the quote that we received back on, it looks like, November of seventeen to do the water meter project out at the fairgrounds. Initially, it was quoted at eight thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars, and then once the project got underway, there was a change in the scope of work, which has been debated as to whether or not the individuals who changed the scope of the work had the authority to do so. So, the city, working with the city attorney, as well as the city engineer, has been going back and forth with Juul contracting to try and figure out what would be a reasonable amount. The initial bid price almost doubled in terms of what the costs in the end came out to. I believe the real, the real change occurred because they elected to install the line on the, a different side of the hydrant, so that the water that was coming off the hydrant would not be metered or tracked. When they did that, then they encountered several significant changes that had to be made, and that's what caused the bill to increase significantly. Ross Arnison has been very involved in the different meetings that we've had, and what has come to light recently is a concern about the fact that we are holding out on paying all of it, and a suggestion was made that perhaps what we should do is pay that base amount, and then continue to work with Juul and People Services to find out who should assume responsibility for the amount above and beyond that. So, the latest direction was for Juul to work with the city engineer, Jason Femrite. Juul had indicated that some of their expense was due to lead couplings, which had to be replaced per Department of Health requirements, and so I have not heard any update from Jason or from Juul as to what that additional cost may be, but I think that in the future, if that number comes back, I think the city might be willing to consider paying that additional amount, but not, not more than that, not the, the full amount that's being requested. Ross, is there anything that you would like to add to that?
No, I think I was gonna summarize. I would make a motion that we approve partial payment of eight thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars to Juul for the water meter installation at the fairgrounds.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, open for discussion.
Is, is it working as intended, whether it was put in the way it wanted to be or differently? It's working?
It's doing the driving.
It's doing what?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so they did what, what we wanted to do, at least as far as getting it metered?
Mm-hmm.
The, the one concern that I would say we have is that individuals may choose to go off the other side of the hydrant, whether they're providing water for their animals or different things, and then we're not tracking it. I think the original intent of the council and also the Fair Board was to track all the water, and we're not tracking that water. So, we have had some discussions about possible solutions to that, such as just putting a sign on there that says, "Do not use water from the hydrant."
And hydrant, are you talking about a fire hydrant? Or are you talking about a, a hand water?
Fire.
Fire hydrant.
Fire hydrant, which sometimes, it's my understanding, they will simply unscrew that and.
Oh, really?
And obtain water for their animals from there.
And there's no way to lock that or anything like that, even just during the fair?
No.
The only thing, I was thinking of locking it, like you said, but then my concern would be if we had a fire out there.
Well, yeah.
And we got it locked, and that would be good.
And who's got the key? I know.
Not a good sinners.
Yeah, no, that wouldn't be good.
He's on vacation up in Alexandria.
Yeah. Our luck, that's what would happen.
Well, if you put a, a meter on the hydrant, and if they have to use water for.
Let it go through that meter.
From the bars, yeah.
Yeah.
That was one of the things that would discuss.
Okay.
But, I mean, I think the intent was, is to have the, to have it metered, and it's not metered.
Correct.
So, what they installed is not what we wanted, right? They chose to do only half of it metered, so really, I mean, we did not get what we wanted, and we got charged double for it.
Well, one of the things that was brought up in the meeting we had with Juul, construction was if you put the meter in front of the hydrant, where the water's coming into the hydrant, you'd meter it. If you had a fire and hooked up a pumper to that fire hydrant, it would probably collapse the feed line coming into it.
Because the meter doesn't have that capacity, I would imagine.
Correct.
Okay.
Well.
Or what?
Right.
Yeah.
So, then the decision was made in the field without any authorization from the city to move the meter on the other side of the hydrant, so the hydrant wasn't metered. So, the fix for that would be if that hydrant's gonna be used during the fair, to put a meter on the hydrant, and then the hose coming off the meter.
And just record that number separately, or get that number to the city office.
You know, it's another, another step in bookkeeping that we didn't want to do. We wanted, but, you know, you put the meter on the front side of the hydrant, and you have a fire, and you can't draw enough water out of it to feed the tanker trucks or to feed the fire trucks.
So, the way we're set up right now, we're not metering all our water in there?
No.
The only meter, water not metered, as I understand it, would be that hydrant.
Fire hydrant.
Fire hydrant.
We do have the absolute right to sign it saying, "For emergency fire use only." And, you know, we could certainly have somebody check occasionally during the fair, and if we see some carny has got a hose running to it, we can raise holy hell and tell him he's stealing water, which is correct. And shut it down, and eventually they'll probably get the idea that leave the hydrant alone. Then we don't have to worry about metering it.
And that added cost.
Mm-hmm.
If it's not gonna work with the meter there, it's not gonna work with the meter there. It doesn't pay to put it, you know, we don't wanna have an issue with the fire.
No.
No, I mean, if it's common practice for people to be using that.
Right.
Hydrant.
Yeah.
Right, so then, I mean, I can see, you know, Attorney Anderson's suggestion where that.
I think.
You just have, you just have to police it for the first couple of years or whatever, and then after that, and then after that, I mean, it should come into, be commonplace that you just don't use it, but.
I think that would be a good first step, is to sign it appropriately.
Yep, just some good signage. We could also send a letter to, who uses that? Maybe the carnival people, the four-H people?
Oh, that would be on the four-H side, you know.
Could we send a letter to the four-H director?
To the four-H club, yeah.
Saying you do, you cannot use, so they know in advance?
Sure.
And the Fair Board as well.
They could talk to their four-H chairman.
Fair Board, yeah.
That would probably eliminate our issue right there. We could still put the signage up accordingly.
Right.
Yeah, just in case.
But if we contacted them ahead of time, any of the entities that would possibly take that water.
Mm-hmm.
We might resolve it right there.
Would be a start, communication's always good.
Yep. And we'll have to just play it from here by there.
Okay, there is a motion to pay the contracted amount to Juul of eight thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars, made by, made by Councilmember Highland, second by Councilmember Yashewski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. Item thirteen, approve or deny final payment of nine thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars fifty-seven cents to Juul Contracting for completion of project thirteen tile six A improvements, that'd be on the southeast part of town, twenty seventeen, upon receipt of necessary documentation. I'm not quite sure what that means, but.
The necessary documentation was four signed final pay requests and a copy of the plans and a affidavit, contractor affidavits. All that information has been received today, so we are good to go ahead with that payment.
And Engineer Femrite has verified that everything has been, he signed off on it?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve final payment of nine thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars fifty-seven cents to Juul Contracting for completion of the project thirteen tile six A improvements.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Batchra, second by Councilmember Cowell, to approve the final payment to Juul Contracting in the amount of nine thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents. By the way, Councilmember Batchra, was that involved your backyard at all? As far as, was there any digging going on?
There was no digging going on in my backyard, but I know they talked about lining some of that.
They did, yeah.
And then there's also, I suppose, little coming off of that into some of the yards. I know my yard probably has something that comes off of that main line that we tile into that too.
Well, yeah.
And I, I didn't see, I honestly didn't even see them back there, so. My yard did not get disturbed, and I, it didn't note, I didn't notice that any other yard really got disturbed.
Okay, okay. It seemed like pretty.
Minimal.
Pretty minimal, yeah. All right, any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. Okay, item fourteen was scratched then, that will be taken up at a closed session at the, are we on for July second, councilman? July second is our, okay. I didn't know if there was any change in that. This would be the performance summary for City Administrator Melvin, and I do have those reports done, but I will withhold them until that closed session due to data privacy, and then the council can review and discuss and question at that time. So, closed session will be part of the July second agenda. Item fifteen, approve or deny May twenty-second, twenty-eight special workshop minutes.
Councilmembers, when we last talked about this issue, there was some confusion as to whether or not the agreement was that the city council would be paying fifteen dollars an hour for EMTs when they go out on ambulance calls versus the two thousand seventeen pay rate of twelve fifty. I have spoken with a few individuals and asked for their recollection of that discussion and what was agreed to, and was informed by those individuals that it was the fifteen dollars an hour, so following up on the directive from the council, the minutes reflect that they are paid fifteen dollars an hour when responding to ambulance calls.
Okay, is there a motion to approve that, the minutes of May twenty-second?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of May twenty-second.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Cowell, second by Councilmember Yashewski, to approve the May twenty-second, twenty-eight special workshop minutes. Is there any further questions? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. Moving on to new business, approve or deny membership application at no cost for Minnesota Department of Administration Cooperative Purchasing Venture.
Councilmembers, in, in talking this last week with Kirby Maintenance Supervisor about some issues related to purchasing, I know he shared with me some frustration at having to go out and get different bids, which prompted me to take a look. At the county level, we had the option of purchasing off a state contract, which if you did that, then you did, did not necessarily have to go out for bids. I did find that Arlington is eligible to participate in a cooperative purchasing venture through the state of Minnesota, and I know that Gaylord and Winthrop are some that are our members of that, and then basically, the state has gone out and hasn't done a lot of that negotiating already on behalf of cities. So, there is no fee to participate, we simply have to send in the application form. Once we do that, then we get a password, so we can go ahead and look at all the different products that are available, and if we choose to go ahead with purchasing through them, we do not need to have the multiple bids which are required through statute. So, this is a time saver. It doesn't, I've included a list of questions. It may not always provide you with the best price, but it does provide you with a, a low price, and sometimes you can even go back with some of your local vendors and maybe have some negotiations off of that. So, in my mind, this is a time saver that would benefit the city, and it's being used by a number of cities. So, it's an option for us to look out, look at, it doesn't mean that we always have to use it, but it is an option. So, looking for your approval to go ahead and approve our application to the cooperative purchasing venture through the state of Minnesota.
I'll make a motion to approve Arlington's membership application at no cost for the city of, or for the Minnesota Department of Administrative Cooperative Purchasing Venture.
I will second that.
Motion by Councilmember Batchra, second by Councilmember Haddelstead, to approve the Arlington's membership application at no cost for Minnesota Department of Administration Cooperative Purchasing Venture. Open for discussion.
Is there a dollar amount limit? I mean, what is, I mean, there's certain approved things, but what's the, is there a certain top end dollar amount?
For off, being authorized to purchase?
Without getting bids?
I believe that number's at one seventy-five, but again, through, through this program, they've gone out there and.
Okay.
Yep. So.
And that doesn't necessarily mean that if Kirby goes on there, he has to buy anything.
No.
If for an hour or other reason, it's a good reference for, for what we're paying for our product, right?
Yes, yes, very true.
Now, if we go that, it's gonna be a paper saver, or a time saver.
Yep.
You know, I'd like to see us use our local vendors or contractors whenever possible.
Absolutely.
Prices are competitive and.
Right.
Well, and if it can be used as a bargaining tool.
Right.
Right, I mean, then, then we're winners, and I mean, I guess, for me, when I, before I purchase something, I, I research, and I go online, and I see who has the best pricing most of the time, and, and then bring it back and see what other people can do, so I hope, you know, the intent is to use it that way.
Yeah, no, I think you're right, I think we do place emphasis, if, if within, you know, similar price, I think we do try and shop local whenever possible.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried.
I was curious, oh, no, I'll save it for an open.
Okay. Item seventeen, approve or deny payment. Item seventeen, approve or deny payment of two thousand seven hundred and seventy-one dollars seventy-two cents to Global Industrial from the Parks Department for the purchase of four picnic tables as included in the capital improvement plan.
Kirby was looking to purchase picnic tables and has looked at two different quotes, one of which is over three hundred dollars, and this one from Global Industrial is at two thousand seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy-two cents for four picnic tables.
Were the global industrial tables the same as what we have on the rest of the parks?
I believe that Kirby did look to purchase similar to what we currently have. Yes, he...
I think they've been replacing four every year.
Yep.
I don't know how many years they have to go yet, but it must be getting close to that.
Catch time.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's kind of a, a metal table with kind of that green resin on, on the top.
Sort of a rubberized coating almost, huh?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So. One option, I know, you know, once we get, once we get approved for purchasing through the state, I don't know if that would be competitive to these prices or, or where that would fall out. We're not able, being that we're not a member, we're not able to go out there and look at what those price, what the pricings may be. But if you were to hold, hold off, you certainly could ask Kirby to run it through the, the state purchasing to see if costs are comparable or, or not.
Well, and I, I believe we've been buying picnic tables every year for, every year for the last quite a few years, so. I mean, you could look at the past budget to see what we spent on picnic tables to see if it's about the same price or not. I know they're expensive tables just because they're a big picnic table and they're heavy metal. So, people aren't gonna hopefully not vandalize them, destroy them.
I don't believe that Kirby has been buying from the same, I, I don't know what, who he's been purchasing from in the past. But I know Global and the other one that he got a con, quote from, Kirby Belt.
Kirby.
I thought he was building picnic tables.
It's a backyard industry, yeah.
In the evening hours, that's what he does.
I, I remember a discussion about Buck going and picking up the picnic tables in Winona. It saved on shipping. But I don't, I don't know if that's factual or not, or if it's something I...
I don't know that Kirby necessarily knows the history of where they've been purchased from, so I think he's kind of looked on his own and that's how he came up with these two.
Okay, would the council want to move forward with this purchase or have Kirby look into the Minnesota Department of Administrative Cooperative Purchasing Venture?
How long does it take that once we fill out application? Is it like a week deal or not a six month program?
No.
I mean, it might be, unless we're in dire need and someone's gonna hurt themselves, I wouldn't have a problem with waiting, at least checking. I mean, if we could save four or five hundred bucks, why not?
Right.
Wait a month, yeah.
Yeah, and we could take thirty days and wait, and if they're cheaper, great. If they're not, well, we know what we can get them for.
Approve it next time.
Yep.
Yeah.
I don't know the answer to how long it takes.
I wouldn't imagine it's a long process. It's probably an online process.
Could be on, online, yeah.
And you probably...
Done as fast as you can get some.
Absolutely. They give you a number right away and at least that, that would be my thought on it.
I, I would be cool with waiting.
Is there a motion to table item seventeen?
Make a motion to table the picnic table purchase.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Hattlested, to table item seventeen, approving the picnic table purchase. Any further discussion?
I think we should just do it now. I don't think we're gonna save a lot of money.
Okay.
Thirty-five hundred seems to stick in my head.
That was the other one.
But from years past or a budget item?
I don't recall, yeah. Okay, motions are made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. This is to table it now. I'm sorry, this is to table it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Four votes in favor, one opposed, motion is carried, and that would be tabled to a future meeting for action.
You know, I guess one question I didn't ask on that is how bad do we need the picnic tables?
There, there are some picnic tables out there that are still the old wooden ones. And I know when I was on the park board, which was, seems like forever ago, for many, many years, that was one of our big goals, is to get all the picnic tables looking uniform, so all of our parks kind of look uniform, getting rid of the old wooden picnic tables that are, you know, falling apart or splintering and, and graffitied and, and what have you. So, I, I don't know how many there's left.
So, they literally, when they get two new ones, they throw, they throw the two old or worse ones away.
Well, I think Buck used to recycle everything out to Sportsman's Park, right? But I think now, but I don't think we're doing that anymore. I mean, I think we're to the point where we, we are replacing. So, and getting rid of...
It's close to the end.
It's gotta be close to the end, I'm talking about. Yeah. Okay, that's...
Discuss that next Monday.
That has been tabled. We'll move on to item eighteen, approve or deny payment of twenty-nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars, plus or minus ten percent, not including wiring and permits to replace council chamber's air conditioner from Wyntat Plumbing and Heating.
Councilmembers, as you'll see in your packet, there are two quotes. Second quote is from Tech Services. Their quote came in at three thousand and seventy-nine dollars for similar air conditioner and work. And as you alluded to before, with the intent of trying to keep it local, Kirby is asking that we go ahead and award this to Wyntat Plumbing and Heating. And we've actually already kind of given them the, the go-ahead, recognizing that this was something that we should move ahead with. I did talk with Rich and make him aware of the situation, but we're trying to get the air conditioning replaced as soon as we can and not having to go extra time during this warm season.
So, what about the other air conditioners in this building? Are they working fine or?
The other, the other air conditioners are working okay to the extent that they're able to cool the building. They will probably be something that we budget for in two thousand and nineteen to replace because of the age. The one that we're looking to replace is about eighteen years old. All of the stuff, I believe, I've been told, is original to the building, so.
So, and we have different units for just the chambers and different units for the other part of the building? So, we're replacing the, the unit that cools this, this, the chamber here.
This one has been the most problematic. We've kind of inched ourself along in the past. It's been losing freon, and so we've put more freon in and without taking the time to figure out exactly what the problem is. So, we've done that several times. It's gotten to the point now where, you know...
It's blowing hot air.
Yes, where we've got to simply bite the bullet and take care of the problem and then we won't put freon in and we'll be more environmentally friendly.
I'll make a motion to approve a payment of twenty-nine seventy-nine, plus or minus ten percent, awarded to Wyntat Plumbing and He, and Heating for replacement of the air conditioner at, for the council, not including wiring or permit.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Highland, to approve the payment of twenty-nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars, plus or minus ten percent, not including wiring and permit, to replace council chamber's air conditioner from Wyntat Plumbing and Heating. Is there further discussion?
It's hot in here.
It's hot in here. Sticky.
Ross, you agree?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried.
And speaking of air conditioning, the Lions Center, I heard over the graduation parties over the couple, last few weekends and such, the central air conditioner that's installed there is working awesomely. Keeps the place nice and cool, and I'd assume it keeps the place nice and warm in the winter, so, there you go.
Look at the money we're saving the city by not having air in here.
I hear it's still running though, so it's pushing some more.
Maybe we should have the council meetings at the Lions.
Lions Center, there we go.
I don't know why we're getting in one like the old one, because the old one doesn't work.
Yeah, you would want to get something different, right?
Why are we getting one like the old one? The old one doesn't work.
You're a funny guy.
Okay, item nineteen, approve or deny revisions to Lions Center use and rental policy.
Councilmembers, the revisions that are highlighted in the Lions Center use and rental policy basically are in recognition of the contribution that, that, that the Lions have made to the facility. It's basically looking at giving them a, some benefit because of the amount of investment that they put into that building, so that the breakdown of groups are based on non-paying and paying users and now would include the Lions as part of the non-paying group, allowing them to come in and to host different functions without having to pay a rental fee each time they're using it, so. Rich, do you wanna?
Sure, I can jump in and, I was brought to my attention that the Lions in planning a district meeting coming up had to pay the hundred and twenty-five dollar rental fee plus two hundred and fifty dollar damage deposit. And I thought, that's not right, especially from a group like that, that has dealt so generously with the city in initially building that building, and now with the major renovation, they've helped in a larger way in paying for. So, along, along with these changes, I would, I would hope the council is comfortable with directing Administrator Melvin to issue refund checks to them for the hundred and twenty-five dollars and the two hundred and fifty dollars in ret, in, in effect, making this retroactive. Along with the paragraph that you see in red on the front page, just sort of spelling out, no ifs, ands, or buts about their...
Why don't you, why don't you read that for the audience?
I can, I can read that. This is a paragraph that will be added to the Lions Center use and rental policy in recognition of the very generous financial support both in the initial construction of the Lions Center and of the subsequent major renovation of the facility in two thousand and seventeen by the Arlington Lions Club. The city council, city of Arlington, hereby extends not only complimentary Group One, which is non-paying status for use of the Lions Center, but also extends complimentary use of the Lions Center for area Lions events hosted by the Arlington Lions, including but not limited to occasional Lions District Meetings. So, this should take care of any doubt that, that, that the city is very graciously host, or extending invitation to the Lions to use that, the facility as, as they need, no matter what the event, being it local or being it district. Cleaned up a bunch of language also in it. It talked about renters, and we changed that to users. In other words, really, the only renters are Group Two, but instead of dealing with the word renters, we changed that to users as under the classification of users, about a third of the way down on the first page. That is the term that was then used throughout. Let's see. So, there's no, really no difference in, in any of the Group One non-paying users in that they, they are expected to leave that building in the shape they found it. They pick up after themselves and not, not having to call in any special cleaning on it. So. I would highly recommend that we update this policy and make it easier for our city staff when a rental opportunity comes.
So, is there, is there still a, as I read underneath, the rental charges, damage and cleaning deposit? Is there still a two hundred and fifty cleaning deposit?
Two hundred and fifty dollar deposit for...
Damage and cleaning deposit is required?
For, for the paying users, for Group Two users.
Okay, well, that's not specified, so me reading it, it makes me feel like that would be...
Where are you?
Well, it just says in addition to the rental fee, a damage and cleaning.
Oh, and on, way at the end.
Right, so I mean, I...
It says in addition to Group Two rental fee, a damage and cleaning deposit of two fifty is required. Group Two is the paying group.
The Lions would fall under that.
Neither would a four H club, neither would the senior citizens.
That's not what I see on my piece of paper here.
Okay.
All right. So, if what you have in front of you is different.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve revisions to Lions Center use and rental policy.
Second.
I, I just want to make sure that it's not, that's not...
So, we're dealing with this right here, the first line of the last paragraph.
In addition to the Group Two rental fee.
Right, if you added those words to it in your motion.
Yep.
What do you all need to add?
It's in there?
It's, no. There were two versions.
There were two versions.
I think this might be the preliminary draft that was included in here, but...
And I've got the final version. So, it, it is included that that reads, in addition to the Group Two rental fee, a damage and cleaning deposit of two fifty is required.
And I can send a copy of that final draft out to members of the council to verify.
Yeah, I, I just didn't see it on my draft that I'm looking at, so that's why I questioned it.
Yeah.
Yep.
But if it's in the final draft and the final draft is the one that we're voting on?
Yep.
Or that you motioned on?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hattlested and Highland. Okay, motion by Councilmember Hattlested, second by Councilmember Highland, to approve the revisions to Lions Center use and rental policy. Any further discussion?
Just based on input, and maybe Ross can comment on this, is there any benefit, Ross, in setting for a period of ten years or something like that? That was shared with me, but I believe the council can make a decision at any time to change it.
Yes. I don't think we usually have a time limit on policies. I suppose the one advantage of a time limit is if we happen to catch it, you know, that it forces the council to relook the policy at some point, but...
And of course, if we're putting a time limit, we'd put it on for all organizations and, you know, you can't really just pick one, one community-based organization out.
I guess for me, I, I wouldn't like to see any kind of time li, time limit put on, imposed on this policy. I mean, they were very helpful and generous in, in getting the building up to where it is right now, and I'd like to extend that.
We would, we probably wouldn't have that facility there if it wasn't for the Lions. We wouldn't have an ice facility as we do.
And it's good to hear the report from Councilmember Batchor that it's being enjoyed by people that have, you know, rented it, used it for gatherings, and that's what we want, so.
It may also be a good chance that in ten years, the city would be asking the Lions for a little money to repair or replace something there.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Item twenty, approve or deny updated contract with Premier Locating for location marking and clearance of the city's underground electric cable.
Councilmembers, we entered into a contract in two thousand and eight with Premier Locating, a copy of which is provided in your packet. Since that time, we have not had any revisions until now. April nineteenth letter... April nineteenth letter highlights what they are proposing. Some of the significant changes include that we would now be providing the flags for marking. So we would purchase those and then provide them to Premier Locating in addition to their fees going up slightly from what they previously were. Also making it much more simplified with one, it looks like, four categories of payment, whereas back in two thousand eight, they had quite a few more categories of of services and what their costs would be, so are there any questions or any?
Can you give an example of what service they provide as far as underground electric cable in the city? What would that consist of? Is that cable that goes on Main Street streetlights, or is it cable that services, what is?
It would be underground, basically, and what they would do is if somebody was doing some digging or something like that, they would go out and they would then locate and mark off where the cable is so that individuals are not digging and damaging our existing electrical setup.
So that doesn't come under the Gopher State One Call system?
Nope, this is our, this is basically our electrical system, so we are responsible for providing locate services.
So if I was gonna do some digging in my yard and I have underground cable from the street to the house, would they locate that or go for one or People Services?
You could make the call to go for one, but then I believe go for one would reach out to all the different locate companies, one of which would be Premier Locating, and they would say, are there any city-owned electrical lines in there? Then they would come out and they would market in addition to any other utilities that would have something in that area.
Same as what Gopher State does with, he's got a gas line, the gas company. I have some marked in my yard, I have four different companies coming in to mark everything.
It gets farmed out too.
Yeah, Gopher State contacts everybody that would have an interest in what's there underground.
Yeah, similar to Hall People Services goes out and does locates for our water lines. This is just another company that specializes in our electrical underground lines.
So the city would pay the fees to Premier? Correct, they charge the city.
Yep.
Does the city pass that along to the contractor during the digging, or is this just a service?
It's a service that we provide. Keep residents safe.
I'll make a motion to approve updated contract with Premier Locating Inc. for location marking clearance of the city's underground electric cable.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Cowell, to approve updated contract with Premier Locating for location marking and clearance of the city's underground electric cable. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. Item twenty-one, discussion about creating a policy to allow contractors to purchase water from Arlington for use in projects located outside of Arlington.
Council members, we became aware that a local contractor was accessing through, going through a fire hydrant, was obtaining water through the city to put in their tanker truck, and then was taking it outside of town to use on a project that they were working on. It came to our attention because one of the individuals from People Services saw this happening and called up and questioned if it was approved by the city, and it had not been. So I've been working with Attorney Arneson, and he has put out an email and made the contractor aware that this is in essence stealing and that this is not allowed. It's my understanding in talking with Lisa in the Administration Department that from time to time, we have allowed contractors to purchase water through the city at the same rate as what we charge residents. And so because there is no policy in place, we, Ross recommended that this be brought to the council for further discussion and consideration if this is a policy that we should create or if the council doesn't want to be providing water to projects outside of the city.
I'm trying to remember, behind the police station, isn't there like a or wasn't there a water that came down to fill, like tankers, you just pulled that?
I think it used to be.
Pulled the cable, right, and then you could fill at a high rate into a tanker? But I thought that there was a charge for that, and I mean, I'm talking years ago, as I remember.
I think you're correct, Michelle, there was, in fact, I think there was even a box there. Like a Quimec, you put your quarters in it for two dollars and fifty cents, because I use that.
You get a pull.
You could say three hundred gallons or whatever the set was. Yes, there was a box there.
Yeah.
Where you could put your money in, get the gallons that you paid for, yes, right behind the police station, in the alley.
Right. So that's gone now, that's no longer there? Does anybody know?
I have no idea.
Where was it located?
Right behind the police station.
South side of it, right in the alley, police station side.
Yeah, T Building, yeah.
Yeah, across from what, the bakery?
Bakery, back there to the bakery.
But it was right in like that garage stall that the police have, so right in that kind of area. And it was just like a, yeah, it was a big tin that came, big hose that came out that you you just put in your tank or whatever, and.
I had the idea that was eliminated when they did some renovations.
Take the water tower down.
Oh, like, oh.
I guess it would be wondering how much water they're looking at buying. I mean, is it a thousand gallons or is it twenty-eight thousand, or we don't know?
They pulled a couple tankers out of there, is it three thousand gallon tank? So they pulled a couple out of there, I would say, over the course of two or three days, probably two loads each day, so you know, probably about thirty-six thousand gallons.
Without divulging what kind of, who it was, is there any way you could tell us what kind of use they had for that much water?
It was some construction project outside of town.
It's about thirteen.
It was kind of a half excuse. The office of the contractor said, well, their employees were used to drawing water from, you know, the city system, but they agreed that, yes, that was for city construction projects. And I was quite severe with them in my email, I said, hey, this is probably gross misdemeanor theft. So it's not just an oops situation, that's the way I put it to it. And got a real quick response, you know, they apologized and said they, you know, wanted to pay for the water. Some considerations, it would be a monitoring issue for the city staff, you know, we're gonna have somebody stand there? Are they, you know, are they gonna, gonna use the honesty system, which obviously didn't work in this case in the first place, where they would call and say, well, we're gonna come and get another three thousand dollar, you know, tank full on Monday? So the honor system. There is a possible safety issue for our system. If they don't turn on and off hydrants properly, you can get a hammering effect, you know, which will break our lines. Also, you've got these very heavy tanker trucks running on city streets. Also, if the city decides to allow it, do we charge them the same as citizens? That doesn't seem right, because the citizens are paying for our water system or our water treatment plant, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and these outside contractors aren't. My recommendation to the council, as city attorney is, our policy is, well, as I put it to them, since we currently have no policy, that means they have no right to draw any water from our city system. And my recommendation is that the council, I'm not sure we even need to set a policy, that the council just reaffirm that that is the council's position. Unless they're specifically authorized to use the city water system for a city project, nobody can draw on the city system for uses outside the city.
I don't know if I'm okay with anybody just opening up hydrant and taking water, I mean, I don't, I'm not okay with that. I mean, that should be left to either People Services or the Fire Department, as far as I'm concerned. But I mean, as far as what we used to have in the past, I mean, I could see considering.
I would, I would consider that.
I would consider putting something like that in for contractors if there's a need for it, and then, you know, have a, what we used to have before, you pay for what you get, type thing. I mean, people used it before I know they did.
You would have to be paying at a reasonable rate, at a normal rate.
Well, yeah, however, whatever. I mean, you set it up to, to whatever it is, I know that other one was pretty, you go, you put a couple quarters and you got quite a bit of water, but.
It was gonna be very convenient.
But, yeah, for a lot of different purposes, so.
I would agree with Attorney Arneson that when you look at the damage that could be done, and the damage possibly to the road, and we have no idea what is going to be going out, as much as I'd like to help everybody, I don't know that I'd be in favor of this one. Just, all I see is lose, lose for the city.
Yeah, I tend to agree, you know, just taking the side of being a good neighbor, my question would be, if they can't get it from the city, where are they gonna get the water from?
They would have to haul it from some other source at a much higher cost. Now, if the city looks on this as a potential sales situation, if we can somehow figure out, like as Councilmember Batcher pointed out, you know, a water source for this specific purpose, not off a hydrant.
Right.
You know, we could maybe find out what the cost of something like that would be, and then offer it to contractors at a significant charge over and above what we charge our residents per gallon.
Because we'd be paying for some startup equipment.
Well, you know, the one thing is charging them for the water, or we charging them for sewer and stuff too. So, I mean, that's all built into our price rate.
Well, again, I think if we were to set something like this up, the water source should probably be somewhere on the perimeter of town, where they're not running up and down our street systems with these huge tanker trucks. It's nothing heavier than water.
And we could maybe have someone from the city or People Services go out there, but then they're in the middle of a project, and now they have to stop to drive out there? We can't expect that of the city staff, we don't have enough staff to be doing that.
It has to be like an automated.
I could say, yeah, if there was a way we could, back to the old system, it was real easy, nobody had to monitor anything.
Right.
But we can't get that in place if we were to do that in time for this contractor, probably to complete this project.
Are they still working on this project, the contractor, or?
I believe so.
How long do we know?
I don't, I don't know how long they're gonna be working on it.
Or their need?
I do not know.
In their reply to you, did they, you know, they want, were willing to pay for it, but did they indicate that they would have some need for more?
No, no, I made it clear to them they had to immediately cease any such tapping into our system until the council could discuss it, and they agreed to that. And also that they immediately pay for what they've already drawn out once the city determined what the charge should be. Oh, and by the way, I guess that's something, I don't, are we looking for some guidance from the council on the cost, or did you come up with something?
Correct, guidance on the cost and if we continue, if we allow it.
But they owe us for, they owe us for some already.
Correct.
And maybe, I guess if we're gonna cut them off, I suppose the simple thing is just charging what our going city rate is. But on the other hand, maybe we should tack twenty percent on top of it or whatever, I mean.
So the fact that they stole it.
Yeah.
Because that's what they did.
Yeah.
You just don't go into some community and open up a water and be, just start filling your semis or trucks. You just don't do that.
What part of town do they open, somewhere near there?
Northland, by North, by Northland.
Oh, okay.
Is the existing equipment that was by the police station still there? That we could easily get that up and running?
Retrofitted and keep it going?
I don't know if it is or isn't, I mean, a Quimec box wouldn't be that much to set that up. And we just have to charge them enough to cover our costs?
But then you get kind of what Attorney Arneson said, where they're driving on the roads.
Yeah, well, we have to.
But I mean, you would locate that mechanism somewhere that is, maybe where they were taking it.
If we did it at the police, yeah, because if we're gonna use existing equipment, it has to be at the police, I don't know where else they would go.
Well, if it's all existing there, but if it's gone.
The system output was running off the old water tower, and so.
Yeah, I don't know, surely couldn't be.
And then, so were their source of water gonna be coming from now? If you lived in that place.
Well, regardless of, you would have, you'd have a line going up to it, and it would have a shut off there, so it wouldn't be going on and off, the fire hydrant, turning it on and off, and then the mechanism would turn it on and off from the line.
Yeah, I was thinking, you know, a water line would be coming in from somewhere, but at what expense?
Well, you just tap it, you just tap, dig a hole.
Well, I gotta think that water line's still there underground, and they didn't tear it out. I wouldn't think they would have wanted to tore the water line, maybe the the equipment above ground could be gone.
That would have to be examined.
Yeah, but we, you know, if there's a way to do it, these guys kinda like to help to guys, but.
Well, one other issue is how much demand there would be in the future.
Yeah.
I'm trying to figure out what they would use, how much water for, maybe it was just dust control.
Grinding concrete takes a lot of water, it's grinding, grinding water takes.
Okay, that could cool it.
Massive for cooling the machine, a massive amount. They backed up those things with semis.
Didn't water or farmers use it for when they sprayed? I could remember trucks with the big plastic.
Yep.
Farmers would come in and say.
And the grain trucks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They probably, they probably used to, I don't, I think farming has evolved to the point where they don't do that. You know, they have a large enough source on their farm, they don't come to town for it.
A few items that People Services brought up too, concerns that they had were, you know, and I believe in the majority of cases, they just simply feed it in from the top of the tank, where there's, you know, some space between it and the water, but there are some tank trucks where you actually feed it in from the bottom. They had concerns at that point with contamination.
Back flush.
Back flushing.
Yep, some problems there, and they also expressed some concern with putting meter readers on because that slows the amount of water, and so, you know, a lot of these contractors don't have, you know, readers that they can come put on and track their own water usage. And for the city to have one and rotate it around the city to wherever the person's desired location is to pick up water, that would be work as well, so.
Well, I mean, I say if we do something, we'd have one designated location and that be it. But, I mean, for, for right now, for this situation, I guess we have to come to a consensus on what we're gonna.
I would like to see the council just saying, no, you can't, I'm sorry, go somewhere else for your water, pay for what you used, and then we'll see what kind of a demand we have in the future.
I would agree.
Right, yeah, because, I mean, you can always survey the contractors to see if there's any demand.
Sure, sure.
I mean, what they probably should have done when they got the bid for this project was come to the city of Arlington months ago, which maybe would have given us time to be able to put something in to help them take care of the costs, and instead of just deciding we're gonna take so.
We're gonna take so, yeah.
I think we should have had to charge them some penalty for them, because they.
Tapping into the system without permission, yeah, yeah.
They didn't install the water from them.
Did they tell us how much they took?
I believe that they have reported.
Oh, they did.
How many tankers they've taken.
I said if they didn't, and we put the squeeze on them, that number's gonna get cut by fifty percent.
Yeah, yeah.
But if we already know the number, they have no option but to pay.
Yes, I believe. Yeah, I believe they do know.
They stole it.
Well, they gave us a number, we don't really know exactly what the numbers that.
No, no.
But that's all we have to go on.
That's all we have to go by.
That is all we have to do.
No way to prove anything, so we get what we can get.
Well, would it be advisable just to charge the normal rate, the rate we charge per gallon?
Do we have a higher rate for business?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, I'll charge them that.
Why wouldn't we charge a business rate?
Charge them the business rate.
I would, I would, I would charge the highest rate we have available with the city structure.
Yep. Per gallon. Yep. Yep. For the number of gallons that they.
Correct.
Admitted that they.
Yep.
Was there a fee for, uh, if someone wanted to fill their swimming pools? Did I see that?
I think the fire department does that?
Yeah, there is a fee. It includes the, the fee for the water, which residents play, pay plus the delivery fee.
Okay, and that's through the fire department, isn't it?
Yep, through the fire department.
Take care of that on Wednesday nights?
Yep, yep.
See, we have a written policy about that.
Yep.
Yeah.
You know, if we were to do something like this, we'd almost have to send the city employee out to the fire hydrant. Then they're gonna stand around for an hour while they're pulling a truck.
We can't, we can't.
Just don't like that. For just an occasional.
Yeah.
Use, so.
And my assumption too is that when they put together the cost of a project, that they're including costs. And that water should be a cost that they're getting reimbursed for.
Right.
Um, at, well, I would suspect probably a higher rate than what the city is charging.
Oh, for sure.
Right.
Probably don't.
At that residential fee.
Actually, commercial fee, that we're gonna be charging.
Yeah, we just dropped the residential thing totally.
Okay, you sort of got the feel for what council is saying on that?
Yeah, I would, I would say that we just continue on with the policy that we have, which is we don't have a policy.
Which is they don't have a policy and.
We don't sell water.
We don't sell water, yeah.
Right.
Okay?
Sounds good.
All right. Let's move into item, geez, quarter to nine already. Uh, item twenty-two, convinced the council meeting, or member committee updates. Are there any?
Well, the meeting we had with, uh, I guess, what was I, how was the committee of one?
Yeah.
We met with Joel, Joel Construction, Ross was there. So that report was already given when we talked about being the, uh, being the building. I think that's all I have.
Do we have anything set up with the ambulance yet? Do we have anything set up with the ambulance yet for a meeting, or?
We're sort of backing off.
We, at the May meeting, we said that we would try and get together with them in three months.
Okay.
Um, at this time, we don't have anything set up. I know I've had a little bit of discussion, Tom as well, with, uh, Mark Anderson, who's basically the, the new ambulance manager. Or will be the new ambulance manager out there, so, um, they're going through some SWAT analysis and trying to kind of lay out what their goals are for the future.
Is this with Ridgeview?
Correct. This is Daryl Roddy and, uh, Mark Ridgeview is taking a more, a more active role in helping them to kind of work better together, I think is.
And he, and he said today, Mark, that they're working on a backup plan, so that if we get short EMTs, they should be able to take care of. This Mark seems like, I think they're working hard at it.
Yeah, and that's exactly, that's exactly what we hope they would do.
And what Mark said. Yeah, so, so I think, yeah, right now the best thing we can do is sit back.
Just back off.
Let Mark make his magic happen. And I think when Mark comes to us and tells us that here's what they like, then maybe then we sit down again and.
Mm-hmm.
Because, yeah, I think the ball's in Mark's court right now, or Mark and Daryl's.
Well, with the new management, I think it's a good step in the, in, in the, in the right spot, or else, and, um, it looks like it's a good fit in that they're trying to be proactive down there and, and, um.
Yep.
Do some team building.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Cable commission, I have nothing. Street committee, we, I guess, don't really have much going on. Police committee, uh, we haven't met and things are going so well, I guess. But I'm sure John will be coming shortly, apparently with some more ideas.
Yep, yeah.
I know the community center is, we've talked about getting community center meeting going, they haven't had one for a long time. And there's a need for the community center committee to get together, so we'll keep addressing that.
Parks are meeting next Monday.
Parks are meeting next Monday.
And the hospital hasn't met.
Ben, they can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Parks committee is meeting next Monday and the hospital hasn't had a meeting yet. So I don't have any finance hasn't, hasn't met, ambulance, well.
We just met.
Yeah. Okay, anything else?
I, I am looking, Ben and Michelle, to try and get a meeting to review the electrical rate study proposals that we have. I don't know if either of you, because I'm going Wednesday through Friday to the League of Minnesota Cities Conference, is there a chance that Tuesday or Wednesday of next week?
Next week.
Would work for either of you?
Tuesday maybe.
I'll look.
Okay. And, yeah, if you could just send me an email, that would be great.
Twenty-sixth?
Correct. Twenty-sixth Tuesday or the twenty-seventh on Wednesday, Ben?
Twenty-seventh, as long as we're done by four o'clock. Tuesday is wide open. As far as I can tell.
And.
I work.
So.
You still on your normal, about the same hours?
As long as we're not by four, as long as you don't start till four.
Yeah.
On two, on Wednesday, on Tuesday I'm open.
Tuesday you're open, okay.
I'll look and see.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
Make them all seem to adjourn.
All right.
I'll second that.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. I just wanna make sure there's nobody, no other discussion items?
Well, I just had a quick question. What is the status on the press rate? Cause this weekend I saw, uh, a fire pick up in the Manfred slot, like it was on display, so I was wondering, did we get the press rate?
Think it's here, isn't it?
That's the one that was decayed, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
That's all.
It's all done, yep, it's in service.
Yep.
I don't know if they've started taking bids on the old one yet or not, but that's the next step probably.
Wonderful.
Okay, any other discussion items?
How about Michelle and Tom, um, some employees have brought up, uh, cellphone allowance. And I'd like to get back and kind of finalize the two thousand eighteen wages, uh, because part of that is that, uh, there is a beginning year and then there was a mid-year kind of a step increase type thing that we're gonna look at. So, is there Tuesday or Wednesday work for it?
Just about any Tuesday or Wednesday, anytime for me. You just have to let me know when and I will be there.
Okay. Okay, so Michelle, if you could just email me.
We'll do a back-to-back meeting one of those days, maybe?
Yeah, yeah. And then, uh, Jim and Tom, uh, looking at the, uh, light replacement and the Minnesota Valley Electric, uh, loan, which came back, uh. Zero interest for ten years.
Nice.
Wow.
Um, so that'll.
Sound like for fifty percent of it, wasn't it?
Fifty percent of it, yeah.
Yep, that's a good deal.
So if there's a chance that we can maybe get together and we can update you, Kirby and I can update you on work we've done, checking into other things.
For me, whenever.
Okay.
They're gonna be out of town. Till next Wednesday or Thursday.
Until? You're leaving like tonight after the meeting?
When, Wednesday morning.
Oh, Wednesday morning.
I'm gonna try.
Well, so we can have a nine o'clock tomorrow morning coffee meeting.
Yeah, well, good for them. Yeah, I think I should hit back on the twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? No.
No. After we talked about the building, um, the resolution that we just did, I was wondering about the TSC building. And if there's any interest, if that resolution that we passed goes along with that TSC building, does that change how we have it listed? Is that gonna be included in our listing for that building?
That would be something for Amy to work on. Basically, I've, that question has come up. I did talk with Brenda and said that we do have these.
Incentives.
Incentives and that if she has anybody who is thinking about that building and has employees that would be coming with it, then she should reach out to us at that time. Uh, unfortunately, I think that the number of times that she's shown it, uh, it's the building that doesn't work, uh, for the individual. At the different levels and the layout.
When is that contract with them done?
It's for a one-year period.
One year.
And when does that year?
Towards the beginning of the year.
Right around the first thing.
Through the end of this year.
We should maybe look at lowering the price too.
I, can, can we look at lowering that price of the building? I mean, I know the first time that we listed it or that we put it up for sale and that was after, right after we received the building. Is we were gonna look and lower the price if there was no bites on it. And I don't think we did that. We have not done that at all.
Yeah, no.
So, I mean, is that something that we should be maybe bringing up and, and consider lowering it? I mean, the market's what bears the demand and.
Might that be discussion for the EDA committee? Because that's a lot of times where we will get opposition is if we, you know, or we could get opposition, not will, but could. If we take that step without at least conferring with them, getting their.
When's the next meeting?
I can't speak for the whole EDE committee, but of the four or five, I talked to three or four, I talked to regular, and we talked a lot about that. That if, I, I believe I can honestly say that if a business came here and they were bringing whatever number here, and we had to cut that price rate in half. That I believe everybody, almost on that EDA committee, at least a majority would say yes to that.
Yeah.
I am, I just about bet my life on it.
I.
Well, I mean, I guess my thought is why not lower it and spark some more interest out there? Because right now at the price that it's at and the renovations that are gonna have to be made there, for it to accommodate anybody, it, it's priced too high. I mean, it's been sitting, when did we get it? Three years ago?
Two, two.
A good two. We've had it pre-sold for two years. But that two years is a long time.
Okay, well, I mean. So it's been.
Well, we've only had it listed since Jan.
January.
Well, not necessarily. It was kind of listed before.
Property moving as it is.
Yeah, property seems to be moving well.
Right, everybody just went with the realtor.
So, but I mean, a lot, but I, the, the reason why I bring it up is because with the, with the, um, with what we passed tonight. I mean, honestly, somebody could buy it for a dollar if they're bringing in fifteen employees, right?
Correct.
Correct.
That's what we passed tonight.
Well, they haven't passed that last time.
Okay, so in right, well.
Subject to approval, I mean.
Well, absolutely. I mean, it depends on the factors, but I guess where I'm going with it is there's really not been any kind of interest or, or, um. So why not lower the price to see if we can get some?
Or raise the price to two hundred ninety-nine thousand.
And nobody looks.
Pardon?
And then nobody looks.
Well, no, now you're in a different category. Somebody looking for a three hundred thousand dollar building, being able to buy it for two hundred ninety-nine thousand, it's a steal.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna find that.
But seeing then you're, you're.
No, I don't see.
You're looking, you're getting a whole bunch of different people.
I don't see, I'm sorry.
Two hundred ninety-nine thousand is a lot better than a dollar. I mean, I'm not good at math.
I, well.
Or another idea.
But the building was gifted to us, so I mean, honestly, whatever we get for it, even if we get a dollar, is something. We've been paying for the building for the last two and a half years, however long we've had it.
It's a bonus.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's actually been costing us money.
Well, right now the market, I think the market is hot and. My, my used car, my new car manager when I was a fledgling car dealer used to say, there's a seat for every seat. So your job is to line the car seat up with the person's seat, so they have, you know, and there's a person out there that wants that building. They just don't know it's in Arlington. And somehow we have to let them know it's in Arlington.
Wasn't that one of the reasons why they wanted it listed with?
That's why we went with a commercial realtor, you know, to, to address that concern.
I know, yeah. So you'd think they were ta- would be taking care of that.
But maybe, you know, have we had many lookers?
We've, I would say we've had half a dozen. A lot of people go through there and, uh, uh, it's the different, like I said, it's the different levels and the way that it's.
Split up.
Broken up. There are some concerns about the roof. Uh, people have expressed that and a lot of people will have to put a significant amount of money into it. To bring it up to what they need. And obviously parking is an issue if, you know.
It's got more negatives than positives.
But, I'm not.
Yeah, and, and each year that it isn't occupied, everything gets older, the equipment runs down.
Gets older and the roof gets deteriorated more.
I mean, I, I guess since we have six months left with this contract, why not just, you know, I, I know we can't do it now here during discussion, but. I mean, maybe put it on the agenda for next time to maybe cut the price a little bit. And I mean, if somebody sees that it's dropped twenty thousand or whatever the price may be. That we feel that we should drop or consult with, with them first to see where they think maybe to drop it.
Right.
And then bring it back to us and see if we can do something about it, because I, once something drops, people are gonna be alerted and get it. Maybe those six people that looked at it before will go, oh. For thirty thousand less or for twenty thousand less, eh.
Does the realtor. Understand what the city is willing to do to get a tenant in there or to sell it?
Business in there?
I mean, is she?
She, she, she has inquired about it. I've made her aware that if somebody's bringing employees along with it, that the city has a lot of options. And nobody has gotten to the point where they've said, you know.
Let's see, let's see options.
Yeah, yeah, there was.
One question on that, realtor's commission's based on purchase price.
True.
We're selling it for a dollar, do we have some understanding with the realtor that they have some minimum commission?
It's a good point, we do not.
Yeah.
Yeah, because then we give it away, we might have to pay them twenty-eight thousand dollars, fifteen, whatever that number is.
Right.
Because I'm sure that's.
But wouldn't it be worth it to get it on the tax rolls again to give, have, to have to pay the realtor?
Have eight or nine jobs in there, maybe we're spending money on Main Street and someone might build a new home. I think absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. I think it would.
Yeah, the taxes are what, less than two thousand dollars on that building, I guess. Which I don't understand, a ten thousand square foot building under two thousand and my five thousand square foot building was thirty-six hundred.
Yeah, my house is more than that.
Yeah, I don't understand that, but anyhow.
So maybe at the same time we consider lowering the price, like you had suggested, we then list those incentives that are now in place too.
Well, absolutely. I think any way that we can.
So that it's out there for people to see.
Yeah.
Any way that we can promote that and if it's through the realtor and then, uh, you should have an honest conversation with the realtor too. I think it's unfair to ask all the work that they're doing, bringing people in with their advertisement, and then not giving them some, some kind of commission. So if we do sell it for a dollar, maybe there should be a minimum commission. That's fair.
Yep.
Only thing fair happens over in St. Paul on the end of August.
Hey, uh-uh, uh-uh, right in town.
Right here. Best county fair.
And the beginning of, I guess, the beginning.
Ask Bear Truckee, best darn county fair in the state.
That's right.
And he doesn't use the word darn.
He jacks it over.
And just another idea to pop into your head, uh, you know, there are some individuals within town, some businesses that have expressed interest in that building, uh, for different uses. You know, the idea, this is what I was kind of thinking in the back of my mind is if the building is still there at the end of summer when things kind of cooled down. I was planning to send out a floor plan of that building and asking them to identify, okay, what portion of the building could you use? If, you know, space was available to see if possibly we could put together some sort of a plan to have the existing businesses in town. Use a portion of that building and possibly even somehow combine maybe administration and police. And, you know, you're not gonna find a building for that cheap. If we do any construction or anything around here in the community center, you're gonna spend a lot of money, whatever you do.
Far more than.
We, right now, you know, with the additional person, we're gonna have two people out in that, you know, outer office area. We're gonna have one person leases at my office. And if during the summer, if there's a possibility of getting a summer intern, you know, now you're, you're maxed out.
Out of space.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, I know that there's some opposition. So, I mean, I, I know that there's some opposition out there to, to the city acquiring another building and I understand that if there's a way that we could. Obviously, we don't need ten thousand square feet, but if there's a benefit to bringing police department and administration, uh, if you can get the library in there. You know, I'm just thinking some ways that you can open up other buildings. But just an idea.